All busy.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Sorry I'm late, guys.
Here it's it was it was.
In session.
No, we don't have a chair. We didn't have a bike chair to even start.
And we now want a floor. Thank you very much. Well, in that case, we're live. Super well, very sorry I'm late, everybody. My name is Tony Manuso. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Grand County Planning Commission to order at four thirteen P M for April twenty eighth. First order of business. I am a little late, everyone. Do we have citizens to be heard on the agenda item that doesn't otherwise relate to H D H O? But online, it doesn't look like it. Moving on. We have a joint workshop starting allegedly early. Addressing revisions to land use code four point seven, the high density housing overlay districts. I will turn it over to Kristen.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Chair, would it be possible to do introductions or just for the minutes for us to know who's present in the room with everyone?
Sure. Probably me. My name is Tony Manuso, planning commission chair. We'll go clockwise around the table and then clockwise around the outer perimeter. Is that what food? Super good.
Megan Schaper.
Brian Martinez.
Michael Curdy.
Albo Ryan, planning commission.
Tricia Dean, Grand County Commission.
Kristen Hoffine. Lots of things. Variety.
McKell Leighton, climbing in Zonin.
Bill Winfield, commission.
Melody McCamus, commissioner.
Erin Lindberg, my name is.
Ben Riley, housing authority.
Matt Miller, housing.
Ronnie Schultz, primary resident.
Rachel, the state partner.
John Knight, Belver.
Heather Myers, my very housing task force.
Laura Harris, also like us and helping task force.
Richard.
Thank you, Chris Hansen.
Thank you, Andrew and Steve all keep you online.
And Steven Starks, curator.
Thank you very much. In that case, Christine will turn it back to you.
Right.
Everyone president.
All right, I'm going to. So that this doesn't get out of hand. We're gonna go try and keep things very sort of focused on what we're doing like the, you know, what exactly we're dealing with. I don't want to get too caught in the weeds on any of this. We had a couple of meetings with the task force. This is sort of the synthesized version of that. There's bound to be mistakes because I'm human and I if I forgot something, I promise I will correct it. This has not gone through legal review. Legal review will be the time where it gets sort of looked at in a different sort of way than the drafting because, you know, if we get too caught up in perfection when drafting, you don't get anywhere. So there are going to be mistakes, but those will be corrected. The main things that I sort of that the task force wanted to focus on were lendability and getting more people into houses. So this is sort of one version of an answer to that. There were a few things that they were focused on that we've sort of tabled. If this doesn't create some forward movement, we will bring it back and do all this again. So we're just going to start at the top and go through it and if so one of the first things that we wanted to talk about was the local employment, fixing some of our definitions. So if we go down to definitions at four point seven point three, does everyone have coffee?
Yeah, somebody needed coffee.
Okay. Active employed household, that's going to stay the same. What we wanted to do was sort of create a few more local, open up local employment, remote employment. Huge shout out to Caitlin. On a lot of this, actually, so. These definitions were workshop. This is kind of the one we came up with. Does anyone have anything sort of to add or concern about it that you want to address quickly?
I'll make one note. I thought we were going to get this in time to be able to review it before this meeting. It seems like it came in early this morning, just a little. So we're kind of going blind with what you have here. It looks like you redid it last night. Preferably if we could get these a little bit more in advance, so we can study them.
No, I understand. So the one of the issues was with the deed restriction. And there was another version of this that just wasn't pleased with. I didn't like the way it sounded. We can't the county couldn't force it. Last night I was sort of struck with a solution to that and we'll get to that point. And so I had to rewrite it.
Okay, but so we're kind of a bunch of us here going through it without having reviewed it. So we'll have to play it by ear.
I apologize. It was just sort of, I mean, that's just the way that it sort of happened. I was caught in what was being told to me instead of sort of thinking a little more creatively, which is what happened last.
But I'm going to kind of give an overview and and other people, you know, we Brian inspired two meetings. We had two meetings back to back that were each a couple of hours. We had a very good working group, I think. And so we've done a ton of work with a lot of, I think, diverse stakeholders to bring what you see in front of you. Would you agree with that, Brian?
Yeah, I think so. I think on top of that, you know, since it's the first time that we're looking, it might take us a little bit longer to move through it. This is the first time we've read the actual language.
Right, so.
Please that we're here. So if I could get back to maybe a couple of first principles with this. So H A S U, the Housing Authority oversees this, correct?
Correct.
And so when we have this stuff spelled out in the land use code, there's a is there a like an operational, is there like a sub thing that they go by?
So
Based on this.
To speak to that a little bit. At the one of the workshops I had brought up that it might be beneficial to H A S U if we created a cooperative agreement, the county and H A S U that blinds out things for them more concretely outside of the land use code because the land use code will speak to developers or will speak to all sorts of things that an administration really doesn't need to be part of. So creating that outside of this and that would be done through the attorney's office. It's something that Stephen and I have spoken about. So I think that working with H A S U on that aspect, so that that can be cleaned up outside of this is separate.
Okay, but that gets guided by this.
Yeah, it will be guided by this as far as, you know, what equals a violation, but how the process is actually administered by them, which seems to be one of the big disconnects with H A S U in the county would be guided by the cooperative agreement and what each of our responsibilities are within that. And where they go answer.
Where they answer.
Yeah.
I have probably question and suggestion. I think maybe we can go through this one paragraph at a time. It allows everybody to read it very clearly. And then I don't know. And many people out here are experts. How does the workshop work? Can they speak if we if you recognize them?
So typically in a workshop is just for the planning commission and the county commission. That would you know, audience members would have their chance to speak at a public hearing. That is typically the way that works. I know that there was a lot of people on the task force. So if we need to ask somebody a question, that'd be totally appropriate. Yeah, I mean, I was also defer to the chair, but it seems appropriate to me.
Yeah.
I think considering the fact that many of these people are helping us draft this, that I would appreciate it if the chair would consider some of these people that have put a lot of time into this, if they need to be able to speak up.
Yeah, and I apologize if I hadn't made it very clear, this being a workshop both outside the rest of the room. I will do my best. I'll actually come over and sit on the other side so I can see the room. And if you guys raise your hands, I'll just keep a mental cue of who's up next and we'll make sure everybody gets a chance to weigh in. Thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so back to definitions, local employment, that whole first section.
So the question I have on that is so we have an independent contractor and employee. So I guess some of the questions are is like local ownership versus non local ownership. And what I I see getting into this is like, you know, let's say a large employer like the hospital. They could own, they could own one of these and then I'm just trying to be like to me, that's a good thing, right? Like we get the hospital to have employees being able to house them in that. So that that's covering that change in here is covering.
Yeah, the hospital is a local entity they could purchase and then someone working for the hospital could live in it. I guess I'm confused about that question. I don't think that was ever.
Oh, okay. No, I guess there's I'm I'm confused. There's some green language, there's black language, and then there's green line or.
Yeah, so the strikers don't or what was previously there. The green language is new language. The black language already exists in the land use code.
Okay, got you.
I did like the addition specifically relating to remote employment. It has been on my mind from time to time that folks may live here, contribute through their employment to resources values that support our local community, the area, our zip code. I know one person who wasn't eligible for a project because they work just on the other side of the river for the B L M office based in price. So their pay stub, all that stuff says price, but they're actually living and working here in Moab. They just happen to be their boss's boss's address is in the next city up the highway. And so that's one unique little granule of possibility and we can't write an ordinance that addresses every possible permutation of every citizen's situation. But I think I saw in here a section about seventy five miles outside of.
Yeah, local area.
Yeah, the definition of local area. I like that. Just something to think about. And I don't know if the land use code is the way we do it, or if it's the housing authorities prerogative, the way that's really implemented and interpreted. But if there's a way to consider situations like that where.
Well, I think we also included one about contributing to the local area. So that's further down.
Yeah.
And H A S U would be able to particularly with the cooperative agreements, you know, sort of be empowered to make that determination.
Yeah.
Pretty easily.
I I mean, I mean to say, I noticed that change in subsection to be unappreciated.
Yeah.
I broke up with that subsection to be, I thought we talked about two years instead of a five year.
Yeah, that I that was it's on my computer. I don't know why.
Okay.
Are you talking about retirement, Mike? The retirement?
Yeah, well.
No, he's on two B.
Oh.
Yeah. The not serving of the local area.
Oh, got you.
And then at the bottom said proceed five years, proceeding five years. We talked about proceeding two years.
How do you guys feel about that? About two years? Because that it was five. So that's a big change. So I'm just kind of would be interested in if you weren't involved in that subcommittee, your your take on that.
My initial thought, not to jump beneath the next step. This is years, three hundred and sixty five days or is years a season? A lot of the folks who are like are applying for this kind of work may work seasonally. And so their start date, maybe they're not a career service seasonal, but they're seasonal, maybe subject to a layoff on an annual basis. Two summers worth of work is not a very long time. That's not a very long tenure. Five summers worth of work sounds equivalent to me to to career service years of work, just trying to evaluate how much real time a person has spent in the community putting down weeks here.
Oh, yeah.
I know I'll just I would say how we would interpret that is we would probably ask for W twos or utility bills. That's how we typically like determine whether somebody is. So I mean.
Twenty four consecutive months.
I mean, we would look, yeah, 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 twenty fourteen second months for two years. I mean.
Yeah. Residency on that.
Reasonable reasonable satisfaction is always a tough one to. I feel you, man. So.
Yeah. And then just once again, I think we also might want to look at the state code residency on that for that two years, which is a hundred eighty five days. Right? So I think that that's where you would do it right there. If they're, you know, over a hundred eighty five days, their residence here, I think that would count as that calendar year.
Yeah, I'm with you there. Definitely.
Yes, I was just looking at this. It's tied to primary residential occupancy in the local area for the receiving five years and primary residential occupancy is defined down below. It's means that owner of record occupying a dwelling unit for a minimum of nine months out of any twelve month period. So that's how it's defined currently as H D H O based on this language as opposed to some abstract nature of.
But I think we also discussed changing that in that month.
Missy asked me how I feel about that. Like I have a friend who's lived here twenty five years, has an internet business and he was looking at H D H O. He's like, man, I don't think I get qualified because I don't serve these businesses. But I also think that economic diversification, like during COVID, it was amazing how many people came to Rim Village and started working out of Rim Village. And in some ways they kept kind of the economy going. In some ways they were like going to the grocery store, buying things. I I know there's a thing where it's like, well, we want to like have this for the local workforce. I also think that it does help diversify the economy in some ways. And that's what I'm not kind of like, there's the argument for and against it. And I don't think that necessarily like having people that remote work that have shown that they want to be here for a while is necessarily that. I just I know there is a counter argument to like, oh, we want like employees that power the workforce here, but I also see it's like there's benefits for having.
Well, I think we we talked quite a bit about the remote employment and modified that by quite a bit. I'm hoping to pick up a lot of those people. So again, I don't know.
Yeah, there was a lot of back and forth on that. We did allow some room.
Yeah, definitely. Because it was we changed.
Okay, I think what we decided on was just kind of took the line, but maybe somebody to come here and they're working remotely and not contributing to our workforce with a compromise was they could go twenty four hours a week with a part time job here, you know.
A compromise was they could go twenty-four hours a week with a part-time job here, you know. Participate in the community, which we thought was a compromise, rather than thirty hours. And we felt that anyone who lives here, if you prove it for two years, should automatically be qualified for profit because they're committed to the community. Um, and then we had talked about removing the retirees, and we thought it would be against our housing, and just if we just had a person in general who's. Lived here for two years, that you could have, although it's been retired here for over two years. And that way we're contributing more to the community rather than, than people who are just moving here.
Right.
And haven't contributed and aren't.
Yeah.
Contributing.
Right. Yeah, and I, yeah, for sure, and I, I, I also would like, I don't necessarily think that's necessarily that big of a problem to, though. Like, so I mean, I don't know, that's just fine.
Well, I mean, you have to keep in mind that this won't fit, this isn't for everybody, and that's not the objective.
Yeah.
You know.
I like the compromise that you guys.
Yeah, I think the compromise for that was intended for employee housing, the workforce or the housing delivery business, and kind of giving you a little bit of. A T and, and on that, but also trying to make it easier for your friend that could cheer for twenty.
Right, that seems. Definitely a reason.
Maybe just to help out as well, because you got something along, um, Mikell provided, uh, pointed out to section A on purpose. You know, I think it's really important that we stick with that A purpose right there, which is facilitating. Provision, provision of new housing units used for primary residential occupancies, occupancies, but actively employed households. Right? Like, I think that if you stick to that right there, we'll, we'll stay on what we're doing and try to stop stretching out to make it reach to every, every single. Small one case right there.
And also, as I, um. Forgive a lot of my remedial getting caught up with all of this, I really intended to attend at least one of these workshops before today. Uh, midst the spring. But as I'm reading the definition of. Primary residential occupancy and in the spirit of the purpose in subsection A. Primary residential occupancy strikes me as a forward-looking definition, so take. Applicants point in time, they're looking to establish primary residential occupancy, is this how I understand it? Am I understanding that correctly? Because it says in a couple other places that, um. The county of primary residential occupancy, I mean, like, okay, yeah, this county in the local area, but, um. The primary residential occupancy being twelve, nine months out of a year. Right? That's like, we're trying to get someone who lives here for nine months out of a year, not necessarily has been actively employed previously. For nine months out of the year, is this correct? Just so that we don't get muddled on those timelines and how long for when and what qualifies, that was the. There's a control.
Well, and like, if that nine months isn't, is something that we need to discuss, then let's discuss it. If you guys like nine months, if you guys don't like nine months, that is something we can. One of the purposes of this is to discuss that, so if you guys want that.
I think I like nine months because that's what, that's what the state considers primary residency, so we're.
That one hundred and eighty-three, and that's different. So the primary residential occupancy, and I think that that was also the one where we talked about, uh, the three-year, the eighteen months out of thirty-six months as well.
And I, I like the use of nine months for establishing like a future idea of what a primary residential occupant. Is nine months is a kind of a magic year for tax purposes, I'm gonna shut that off, sorry, I'm a magic number there. And also a nine-month tourist season marched through November. Um, a lot of intermediate seasonal jobs on the hourly basis are going for like thirteen hundred hours, just about twelve hundred and eighty hours. Just about nine months, so that's a good number to fit with like. Thinking about what establishing a primary resident occupying a space means, nine months is good. But if we're talking about a gateway for folks who may be looking to stay here full-time. Maybe only have six months of work, but would stick around and find another winter job or something in the shoulder seasons. I don't know if we want to, you know, we might justify. Yeah, just shorter on the, uh.
I, I thought the nine months was a hundred and eighty-three, looking at it, it's six point one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, and, and, you know, personally, I would say, you know, if we're going to split errors over three months or six months and nine months. I think I would probably go with what if the state code.
And also, you know, that's a hundred and eighty-three days is, is registering your car, registering the boat, all those other things.
Uh, one quick thing there on the retiree. Or right there, so would we take out, could we take out the retiree right there, and then change that to the two years as well?
Yeah, so it's. I have it crossed out now, ready, and it's, it's already, it's crossed out as a retiree is crossed out, just as a person, I don't know why I printed with that.
And just below that, the, for the five, one, two years, I was a little.
That was, I mean, that's just, that was because I, we hadn't. We were gonna do three and a half, two, we went back and forth on that a little bit, so if two is it, that's what I have.
So any comments about that timeframe? As I, it was being, it's, it was in debate, so do you guys have a comment?
What was the polls on the three?
There was two, two point five, three, and then five.
So was that five?
Two point five was sort of the, the one that I sounded like one, but I couldn't actually tell whenever we watched the meeting, so.
But they labeled it two years.
I'm gonna tally ho right in here with some biopic silly stuff, and I apologize. With, and I'm a geographer, with an area like ours. Putting a circle around a center point downtown and calling it a radius. May include a lot of area where no one lives and disinclude a lot of areas that people may commute from. Might we better think, you know, sixty-five miles an hour at a sec, did we already talk about this?
Tony on that is I took a seventy, uh, uh, to the furthest point in our county, seventy-five miles out. So, right, so then that includes our entire county, but it also then gives grace to places like Blanding, Red River. Um, LaSalle, all of those places also still are qualified.
Thanks, guys, I just wanted to make sure that bit. Getting caught up.
Alright, we're going to. Move forward, um, so the next one that we, well, that was local area. Local business was discussed at length, organization, um. So, all the way down to, so deed restrictions were a big issue, it seems like we're good on. Definitions, so I'm just go on the, oh, wait, sorry.
I, I just, I did have one comment on, on the definition, please for organization. It says branch of a local state or federal government or five oh one C three, I think it should include that, that the, that. Local areas in that somewhere, so that way somebody's not like. Remote worker working for the Fed in Washington DC, you know, I mean, I, I understand what my understanding the intent is, is like in marches worker, that works remotely or.
So you're saying within the local area.
Just like, and five oh one C three is, should be, it should have a local area.
Right.
So.
Yeah, you mean like within.
Is there gonna be, is there gonna be any question with that, with a. Tax, uh, an IRS worker that gets paid by the IRS outside of the local area, what is. In our area, is, is, does that make sense?
We, we had that discussion.
Yeah, it is changed to five oh one C three operating within the local area, so that covers anyone who. If the five oh one C three is based out of, you know, Cincinnati, but they offer here.
Worried about like, state, federal, local government. Making sure that they're serving the field offices and districts of our area, and you can use the language. A political subdivision of, of federal, state, or local government headquartered in the local area. Right? That's, I mean, what's that?
That, that wouldn't matter then, because I've already talked about.
Well, I think a couple folks were like, what about someone who works for the federal government, serves, um, the region for office in lately Colorado? Right? But they want to live in Moab, not the same as works for the federal government, works for the southeast Utah group. Headquarters, a political subdivision of the federal government head. You guys have muted yourself, however you've done that. Still can't, now you're on.
I didn't really know where that came from, I just thought organization of five oh one C three and federal government, and I was like, I think it tended like, you want to be able to. Somebody has to pay some from, from, from National Park Service, and they work at Arches, obviously you want to allow them to buy a HHO unit, right? But they have a pay stub from NBS, but they work remotely for Washington DC.
Right.
That's not necessarily what we're trying to do, right? So somehow trying to localize that five oh one C three or federal government into the sub-division local, right, and not just.
I think that we had brought up was a few people that we had denied, one worked for the IRS, and one worked for the Utah State Tax Commission. So that's what we brought it up, that's where we thought that that does benefit the local community, because we all benefit from the IRS. Should definitely help, since we go to help with ourselves tax, so I guess, is, is that something that's locked up to your discretion?
Well, because we have an F D O with this. I mean, as sort of, I, I would send it, you know, see, because that's not.
And the discussion that we had had in the group was that, you know, Governor Cox has an initiative to bring remote workers. To the, um. Rural. Rural areas, and in an effort to help boost our economies, and, and do we want to support that, and this HDH O not the right product.
Yeah, not my, not my, uh, my decision to make, but I bring that up because I, that's my interpretation of, of HGO in general, is to try that like. Oh, the, to keep the, the localness in place, so.
And the organization would apply into, would, would be wrapped into the local employment, so it would be local businesses or organization, each of which is operating in a certain area. This topic.
And I thought we were using that organizational word, uh, definition of the M to help, uh, with Steve Chase or Tim. Along with that.
So, back to the instructions real quick, okay, so the instructions were a huge topic of conversation. Um, this is also.
What age and number can you tell us when you move on?
Seven point six. So the deed restrictions, there's a lot of issues with getting financing through the deed restriction, so. The prior language, um, no one could get funding, so we have, well. We're removing some of this revoked, deny or suspend any permit, including one permit, that's, they, they seem to have an issue with that. And instead, we will refer to. A new section in four point seven point eleven, which will include, um, remedies. For violations or breach, I haven't found out until the wording, this is what, um, happened at three o'clock in the morning today. So if allowing, um. But try creating an avenue for cure for, um. People who are having mortgage will allow them to get a, a more traditional mortgage, and that will be more fleshed out, um. It's something I've never done before, so I'm trying to have a different paper where we're working it out, but, um, that will need to go through hard.
Are you talking about C right here, the remedies?
Well, yeah, so that's down there, but it, it's how we will be able to remove those deed restrictions from the plat, from the development agreement. We'll be able to get rid of that language that we all sort of had, that was giving me a lot of heartburn. And it'll allow the county to still enforce the contract while allowing, um, financing to occur. Um, and it was sort of, um. Seemed to be the, the easiest way, I would like these guys to weigh in if they, it seems like it would work, um. And it will still allow more than a fine. Yes.
Second to read it.
Yeah.
I just want to say, uh, sort the top of that, where the notification has changed. Um, I know we had talked about there being like. Instant notification of HOSU anytime I'm entitled or recorded fee was full.
The, yeah, that would be done by the county, and it doesn't need to be in here, because we would just file a notice of interest on the reported. Um, and that, that doesn't need to be in a lot, this, it was just a notice of interest that we filed by ourselves outside of this.
Just from administrative point of view, we're worried about information.
Yeah, so that would automatically give you guys, as soon as a title is pulled, that will notify you guys, I'm a county. And it would be, and it wouldn't be in land use code, that doesn't need to be in land use code, it would be addressing administrative.
It's not, it's not, it's not listed, but I think that's where it can, there, it's, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, sale of units was a section.
But do you guys have thoughts on that, um, for the deed, the. The deed restriction that will be reported, I, does anyone, does anyone have a heartburn about removing that?
Maybe while there, a quick question again on the organization, so I just went and searched the document. And the only two times that organizations, organization is used is one in the definition, and then second. Here's been the definition right at the end, is there some other place that.
Right, so in, um, local, sorry, local employment, um. You guys won't have this, it says one or more local business or organization, each of which is operating in a certain area. So, just so that if you're working for an organization, it's, it's wrapped up, so that, yeah, no, you're fine, it wasn't on there.
I thought one of the larger landing issues was the, uh, other four point seven point eleven, the enforcement side. The section B and the second, well, there's a green one, and then there's a black one. The actions to revoke, deny, or suspend any permit, including land development permit, uh, condition to use permit, building permit. Does that also encompass the CFO or?
Yeah, well, and then, uh, there's, there should be language added that says issued to developer, so that the developer can still, um. So that we can still revoke COO to a developer, which is the only way we can enforce our, like, you know, building.
Yeah, but that's the problem.
But that, that belong to the owner also.
No, it's just to the developer, it says right here to the, issued to the developer. The discretionary approval issued to the developer, so it only applies to a developer. And that would be, I mean, that's something that's in, in all sorts of land use code language, like that is a normal. No, that shouldn't cause any.
So, but that would be for. Like if you sent it to the developer, all of Murphy Flats, all of a sudden they lost all of their certificates of occupancy, then. But you're trying, what you're trying to say is like the unsold units.
Yeah, so during, while it's being built, the developers.
While it's being built, while it's under construction.
Yeah, and that would only apply there, um.
Once you, once you issue the permit, and once you issue the occupancy, are you gonna take it back?
And that's what lenders.
That's the problem, that's the problem.
Right, but this would only apply to developers.
But again, when are you gonna revoke it?
When would we?
Yeah, when they're invited.
Uh, let's like, if they, I mean, we wouldn't, I think we could probably remove certificate of occupancy, but everything else has, like, it's normal language in land use code that's everywhere. I can remove the certificate of occupancy part, um, if that's given everyone heartburn, but thus. You know, like, the development permits and conditional use permits and all of that is, is something that we would do.
In that wording, we can't say post CFO or CFOs. Like.
I think you're. However, they want to, and they can say yea or nay. It's not clear.
Do you run it by?
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
Is it easy to get their feedback?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I can see that, and then do you have? I guess I'll, I'll research some other areas, stuff, if you're saying that is normal to have that in other land use codes.
It's, yeah, I mean, I think that, that's a normal, like, that's a normal, that's language pulled directly from a development agreement.
Yeah, well, yeah, the development agreements, that's not really the issue, is the issue is, in the land use code, when you go to enforce a property. What you're saying is if I buy this property, hey, I bought a Murphy Flats, or I bought a unit that was in the HDH O. And I am now in violation, six months down, I'm now the owner of that property. And I am now in violation. Six months down, I'm now the owner of that property and I violate something in the H D H O. You're telling me you can revoke, you go back and you can revoke.
Well, so it would apply to every conditional use permit or a building for, or a sorry, business license or something. If you don't have a building permit, it wouldn't be revoked. Like if the owner never got a building permit, we're not going to revoke it. This would only apply to the developer because they're the only one who has a building permit. If you don't have one, I can't revoke it. So it wouldn't.
This is while it's under construction and it's not meant for the secondary market. It's not meant for, that's the, the end user.
But it has to be in the land use code.
Is given, you can't take it back. You're not going to be able to take it back. So taking certificate occupancy and.
Yeah, I already removed that out.
Yeah. So.
Or do you just say instead of two, there's all for clarifying prior to sale or something? It's very clear to the lender that it's not something that can happen.
Yeah. This will also be addressed in the remedies and violations and breaches that, that link, that letter C is going to line out more about how, let's say it is sold, how the lender would be able to make sure that they had an opportunity for curing any issues. And that was, that was something that Caitlin brought to my attention and it, it seems to work for them. And ours will be a little different because we don't own the land under it, but it's, it is a process that I think would be, has been vetted and it seems to be working. And it's something that Stephen seemed to be on board with. And so it's just a, you know, a way that allows us to move forward that prevents just the instant block. But this, you know, these languages, the language as far as like making sure that we can enforce this, like we have to be able to enforce things in the land use code. It can't be in the development agreement unless it's here somewhere. And so I understand that most of these have been built, but there are some that haven't. So I can't remove that language. Like it doesn't make sense for us to not be able to enforce our land use codes just because it's, you know, some of them.
Prior to the sale of the secondhand market.
We could, yeah. I mean, if you, I can try and incorporate some language like that, but we can't remove this whole thing. It just doesn't, like there's some that are being those right now.
It also.
Yeah. Yeah. Break it down with the.
It, it strikes me that farther down in section C, when we're talking about remedies and cures. The, this is more politics and process than it is practical understanding, but Chrissy's point, the county is going to need to be able to retain as much of its authority to enforce and interpret their land use code as, as they may need to. We have had good faith actors, thankfully in the past. That is not always the case and that hasn't been the case everywhere. So I think if the if the procedures for remedy and cure are very explicitly spelled out. I would hope that a lender is familiar with the idea that things come up, they can be fixed and that should not be a risk to the lender. Because I mean, this is a moment where I think the onus does need to be on the developer to participate in the tenants of the program that is, you know, conceding their development, right? So maybe the solution to this language isn't in the legal action section, but in the remedy section. Maybe more detail in the remedies gets us to feeling better about like striking certificate of occupancy. I'm not an expert on that sort of stuff, but I would like the county to be able to use any scenario possible in order to like protect its interests and the interests of its citizens. You know, like if, like a CFO is, is issued an error. And, and now you're locked in, like let's not negate the possibility that we seem, we make mistakes all the time, you know? And it's like, just what happens? So having better language about how to fix it when stuff comes up is maybe more productive than just like, no, we can't do that.
Yeah. And that was, and that was kind of the, the point of where, you know, what the point of this whole new C, you know, the remedies violation. And I thought that that would be, I mean, I'm, but I'm open. If it doesn't work, then, you know, but it seems like a.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's move on.
Ronnie, well, I'm re, re, you know, we didn't, we didn't talk about, I tend to see our language about mortgages, that's a people. Yeah. So I feel like this is the start of it. Obviously it's only been two weeks, so a ton of time, but, but I think also a lot of the remedies and this kind of thing needs to be in the deed restriction itself. Like defaults of that is like default on the title. I think that's what Chris is trying to get down. It's like, what is, again, about defaults? Specific to the unit on the secondary market first. It's like, what is a developer doing something incorrect in the land use code?
Yeah. So the, and, and then the deed restriction would just reference down into the remedies for all of that. I might just said, if it doesn't work, then we, you know, try something else, but that was a a lot of good idea.
And just piggybacking off that comment too, I think there, the other thing that's really important is I know that there's always a level of desire and like and dislike. And then there's a no go. And so if the, the lenders, when we're looking at this, if we get input from the lenders that say it's a no go, that's one thing versus a business decision to make a loan on particular language. And so I think that ferreting and kind of getting additional information about that, because when we hear that they're not willing to do it, you know, isolating why they're not willing to do it would be really helpful. And so it might not be the terms that the lenders really want to see. And, and so that'd be great to get additional information. If you want to follow up and say, look, I don't think that they'll do this or why they won't do this, or if it changes when they look at it, because a lot of people make the business decisions based on the risk and the level. And they provide the, the rates based on that. So just noting that when lenders are looking at this language, what their kind of input is. So we can circle back to.
Any additional thoughts?
If I can go, so I, I want to go backwards.
Yeah.
And, and, and ask, and ask, yeah. So I'm, I'm interested in this seventy five mile radius and it's, does it mean that somebody, let's say who works in Green River or Glanville? By each of the thirty five miles, could use that to come and retire here? Is that roughly what it means? Yeah. Just make sure it's.
Yeah, we, we removed retirement. So just a person.
A person with a previous work history.
Let's see.
Instead of just retiring.
A person with a work history required under subsections.
Okay.
With that person, so that person would be qualified to retire. Yeah. I just want to make sure it's clear to people.
As long as they worked in the, you know, in the local area.
But the, yes, and that local area is defined by the seventy five.
Twenty eight years and I'm retiring to Green River. It'll be, so close.
Can I clarify that? Because I think we've changed it so that it's if they have had their primary residential occupancy in a local area for two years. It should be that seventy five mile radius. Not necessarily that they worked in the radius for two years. Does that make sense? It's that they lived there.
Say one, two, three.
So now we're.
Now, because we were, we were just going to scratch. When you're not, then if you're about your residency, then section B of the one before that conflicts with your number four. I don't know. That is it's done.
Where's that? They only have to live here. They don't have to work.
They don't have to work here. And that mirrors that whole thing restriction. Well, living here for two years, there is your, your deed restriction. Creating private residential occupancy for two years in the local area. That's just your deed restriction or.
Yeah. The application. These employment requirements are, are have set based on what we just changed ours to. For our deed restrictions, we maintain primary residency. We don't maintain active employment to, once you qualify. We require continuous employment if you're renting, but if you're an owner, I mean, it's so hard to, other than primary residency to for sale if you get a job or, or people or.
But to qualify to get into your program, they have to go to the, they've been primary residents for two years.
It's either active employment or that similar condition here of like, either actively employed right now. You can move here with a job offer. For our restrictions, some of our developers have time requirements on top of that. Since either I'm employed right now or primary residence.
Yes.
So either the trigger works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Regarding for us in five.
So you define the hiring.
So did you have something? Was that your handle?
Yeah. So, well, thanks, Bob, for taking us back. I'm on number three also, and it's the last sentence of number three. The reasonable satisfaction of the county that such person meets the foregoing or criteria. And then everything is marked out. So there's something, there's a need to, we either need to add something there.
That sentence should add that satisfaction of the county. Thank you. Mix the foregoing.
Satisfaction of the county that such person meets.
Before going straight.
Done for that absolutely order. It's just a period. Because we deleted four.
That's a quick thought, and I'm very sorry that we started late and I'm going to try and keep it sort of on tempo. I don't remember exactly how long we had on this. Looking forward for a moment, do we also want to review the language and strike through in the ordinance as well? Or is it just the land use code revision? Cause I've got land use code revision. They have the ordinance in my.
Sorry, but that's, okay. So that is four point seven, what you see is four point seven point one three, those are the rules and regulations that were incorporated into the land use code in, I believe, twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
So for some reason they incorporated the warehouses into the land use code. So that's just what it says.
For some reason, carry some weight there.
I have updated that number to four point seven four three because seven point seven is something else. Those will be removed in the final draft.
Copy that.
But the rules and regulations.
Yeah. Starting at section one. Super. The next section is purpose should be easily reflected in the actual code. Moving down, just getting myself caught up on section two.
Yeah. So we'll put, I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop and talk about the owner exceptions because I think that this is a kind of important one for everybody.
Front of sheet four, folks, under section two.
Section two under tariffed households. And we had a big, long conversation about creating buckets. And all the things that would would be incorporated with these buckets. The buckets were messy, but strong exceptions, I think are helpful. And so with this, we have three sorts of exemptions. The last one is one of the ones that's I think maybe the most important to talk about, but I'll go over all of them. Owners and managers of H D H O multifamily apartment development in which units are rented and not sold individually are exempt from being qualified households. This is already, this already existed. I just broke it up. The next one, developers of H D H O, H D H O housing are exempt from being qualified households such that an H D O development project may be sold in its entirety. For a non-qualified household who intends to build out the project. This was also already there. It was again broken up, but this one is new. The owners of an H D H O unit in which the property is under the control of an H O A or kind of any, I don't know, C C and R S, whatever we want to say there. Which governing documents maintain at least fifty percent, forty percent, sixty percent. I don't know what number we want to include there of the total number of units in the development be permanently owner occupied is exempt from being a qualified household. So there was a lot of conversation about making sure that these could be sold to people who don't live here, but who want to rent people who live here. I think that this isn't a compromise we discussed, but it's one I would like to discuss if we wanted to. Because this was sort of contentious for a lot of people. If we want to not do it this way, it's just one idea I had that maybe we, if we're going to make this concession, we require larger owner occupancy so that it's not a constant rental or like happening with the neighbors, with the community surrounding the area, that the people who own these live in them and it creates sort of its own community that allows people to buy them who might not live here to rent them. What do you guys think? No? Yes?
I mean.
This was previously discussed.
Yeah, I know. And, and I'm still going to stick to, I mean, I think that this idea that we need to have people who own it, live here, and even if it's larger units, right? The whole purpose of this is to get people into houses. And I think right now any more restrictions that we put on trying to get people into houses is going to slow this program down. And I mean, I'd really like to see it to where, you know, that this is opened up for people to come invest here. And as long as the people that are staying here are local residents and meet the qualifications, I'd like them to be able to qualify. I don't think that, that whether the, the people who own the residence are, live here in Grand County, or they want to make an investment out here to do this, because I mean, I just don't see that being, I mean, it's not like the greatest opportunity in the world to come make an investment to have, you know, some for it's not subsidized, but it's going to be lower qualified housing right here. I don't think that's going to upset the market. I don't think that the market, this, this market's big enough to where it's going to actually upset the market of the H D H O.
Right. And I don't think that this would actually it, it wouldn't create a situation that would prevent outside investors from investing. It would just sort of.
But they would just have to be at a larger scale.
No, no, this one, this is, no, that's not that. So this is saying that if you have, let's say thirty seven houses in your eighty percent of those have to be deed restricted. This one would be fifty percent of any of them, even those twenty would just have to be owner occupied. Or, you know, we can change this number. It doesn't have to be fifty percent. I just think that this was one of those areas where we're it seemed like a, something that people were upset about. And especially when this project was brought to our community as, you know, local houses for local people. Making sure that their owner occupied, and we can change it. If you guys hate it, we can definitely get rid of it. What'd you say, Ben?
Can you specify what change you're talking about? Like what section is there? Is there an add here that I don't see under number two?
So under two, yeah. So three.
Highlighted in yellow.
So. Chris, does that mean? Does that mean fifty percent of the whole entire?
Oh, I know.
Could be went owned by somebody else and rented out. Yeah, they could be owned, they could be individually owned by people here. Fifty percent of them. That's probably. It seems really high, but also these guys wanted to open it up to everyone so that any, you know, a hundred percent of it could be open, could be purchased by outside.
But why would we restrict away from that? I mean, what's the purpose of opening, I mean, why are we not opening this up? That's been the problem with this H D H O from day one is that it's so restricted. So opening it up and doing away with your percentage altogether. If somebody wants to buy this and their grandmother lives in Tucson, Salusa, I don't care where they live. They should be able to buy her or him or anybody a property to live in here. And these percentages are restricting us.
But that wasn't the original intent. But that wasn't the original intent.
Well, the original intent was wrong. It didn't work. That's why we're here.
And get rid of the H D H O.
What's that? Well, that's what we're trying to do is at least open it up so it'll work.
Open it up, like a lot of the issues seem like they surround and lendability. We're trying to solve some of the issues to get people into it. But I don't think the goal is to open it up.
Well, who's gonna? Even if we did adopt a percentage or we, which I I would rather someone own it and have be forced to rent someone. Local. But who would track this? Or would they have to put the workload on this?
We don't require business licenses for long-term residential rentals only short term, so we don't track that. And that would be putting a whole lot of. Um, accountability on. A third party.
That's right.
I know, I mean. The intent when you guys were having this original H D O, H D H O conversation, we're gonna look at what's written right here. Once again, it says new housing. Units used for primary residential and potential occupancy, but actively employed households. So whatever we do, I don't think that we should create any more restrictions on this program here that stops this 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 perpetuity, which is the purpose of this program, which is to put people in housing. Right? And I mean, whatever it takes to to go that, that's 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 where I'm gonna stick. I'm gonna draw a hard line.
So so I'm I'm just um, I'm really trying to understand. The like plain language of three, I think you did a great job, and I just, I'm remedial here. I'm sure that says something very specific, and I just can't understand it. Um. But I understand the spirit of Bill and Brian's point. You would think that. You're saying. Um. It doesn't, it shouldn't matter what the H O A says. The governing documents don't need to maintain any percentage of the total units in the development to be permanently owner occupied, because th- this just mentions like. You know, a certain percentage of these need to be owner occupied. Um. I don't know if this is really talking. Does this, what does this say? What does that mean owner occupied? And how does that relate to renting like an a non-owner occupant renting? What what are the portions looking like here? This is kind of difficult for me to understand.
So basically, what this would do is um. It would create a situation where. Fifty percent of them would have to be sold to local people to buy and live in.
Okay.
And then the other fifty percent, it already says that eighty percent have to be. Um, yeah.
So but it the the way I think, that's what I thought, and the way that it says it is that it exempts. Them from being a qualified household.
Fifty percent of them.
But the but qualified household does says some stuff. Like looking at the definition of qualified household. I'm probably being really remedial, and this like a Tony, we talked about this is always valid.
No, cause there's some of us that definitely wanna, this is needs to be cleared up right here. This is going backwards rather than forward, Tony, so please.
Well, I don't want it to go backwards.
Right.
Going forward.
It's going forward. I think that right now it says that eighty percent of them can't be purchased by anybody. Um, so I'm adding thirty percent to be purchased by.
Anyone, as long as it's lived in by a local person. And you guys need to back up and remember like.
What it's for.
We gave what, right, what it's for, and the amount of density that was given away to these developers. It's not as little, it was huge. And so then to just remove that and say, well, let's just open it up. That's. That.
He's on the factory, he's on the whole county.
We're not opening anything up. We're still leaving locals living in these houses. What we're opening up is allowing somebody. Who has a grandmother that wants to buy somebody else's house here. You're restricting. This by forcing it to be ownership.
A very nice spin on it.
No, I I I don't care if it's your brother, your cousin, or somebody with more money than God. They should be able to help a local get into a house.
And.
That's the idea behind the H D H O.
This is a, this, I think this is a huge compromise, and if we wanna go.
Beyond a huge.
If you wanna go bigger than fifty, you can, but I do think that we need to start this. I think that the H D H O, they got. You know, forty five, thirty five, fifteen on one acre when these were one to one. These were really, really large densities, and the neighbors surrounding these.
Yes.
We are getting complaints about that all the time.
We are.
And so, and so. You know, as from the step planning staff's point, um. We need someone who's standing up for the community, the people who have lived there and next to these people, and. You know, these developments were important, and people need to get in houses. We get that. But, you know, opening it up in a smaller way, instead of just opening it up in a really big way, might be helpful. And if it doesn't work, we can revisit it, and if we don't.
My understanding that the three hundred have been permitted, or there are no, you can't apply for more H D H O.
That's true.
So we're not affecting any neighborhoods here. We're just opening it up. No, we're not. They're already allowed.
Been built out yet.
Well, sure, but they're coming, but all we're doing is opening this up so that more people who work here can get into housing. That's all we're doing. We're not saying. That in any way, shape, or form, how is that running the neighborhood down, whether you require that ownership?
Absolutely. The neighbors right now, across from across from Buzz Bates are up in arms. That place is huge, it's extremely dense, and if we gave it over to developers to sell. Outsiders can come in and buy them. They're 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 advertising them right now as luxury condos, which we've already talked about it. It's not against. The law for them to advertise as they see fit, but those neighbors gave in to having that density. Because they thought it was for local housing. So to turn around and take that away, we are punching those, punching right in the face.
Requiring local housing.
We've already given it away. It's already gonna be for local housing. We're just choosing, is it going to be for ownership, or is it gonna be for?
Right.
Trying to do this, and and I would say there's there's people that need houses, and.
I think there's absolutely a zone of possible agreement here. We haven't, it took me a while to read to the very bottom of section three. Because I was getting hung up. I had to draw circles times. But that last sentence says the occupancy shall remain restricted to qualified households. That's a, I I think we all agree that that thing needs to stay.
Sure.
So let's starting.
This that we're gonna, we, how do, they're already. These guys are already going in and checking it. So then we talk about how is this going to be policed, you know? And so the more we give. The more we gives developers or grandmas or aunts and uncles to buy the stuff. And then have people living in it, then there's more to to police. So I think that, you know, going from eighty to fifty percent is is like she said, more than. I don't think we need to open them all up to anybody buying them. I I agree with.
I would.
With that.
I would ask.
I would push back against the fifty percent personally, but.
Probably revisiting something, but it sounds like we're all fired up to get into it, so let's go. Um, I'd like to hear from some of maybe the lenders, developers, and market people. Like, is there a number where it's like, oh, you make me. Make me sell this many, and it math probably don't math? Is it like, oh, and now I need to figure out how to find, I built a hundred units, and I need to find eighty buyers? In order to be exempted from myself being a qualified household. I need to find eighty buyers. I'm not gonna find eighty buyers. Do I need to find fifty? Do I need to find thirty? I feel like pick. Taking that number is is um. Like, number first, and then is, do we like it second? Sorry, Rachel, yeah.
But so, Ricky Platts is going on. Five years since some section inception. Um, pre-sales probably started in four years ago. Um, today, we have finally given fifty percent. Today. So that's how long it's taken us to get to fifty percent.
How many units is occupied?
Um, that is nineteen.
Nineteen.
Eighteen. Nineteen.
I. I. I really like the.
We're sorry, um, but. Caitlin can back me on this. The original intent of the H D H O was not for owner. Local owners. It was for anyone to own them. It was a local occupancy. That was the original intent. That was the original ordinance that passed, and it was disputed, and yes, it was changed to. Local ownership, but the original intent and the people who wrote it, Zachariah and Caitlin, both signed affidavits. Swearing that that's what their intent was when they wrote the. The the original H D H O. So I I want local ownership as well.
Respectfully disagreeing, and I've been texting with Zachariah as we've gone through this, and I bet he will come and speak to this planning commission meeting and say the exact opposite.
Oh, I thought he signed an affidavit.
I so, oh, so what I'm doing red lines, what I will say right now is I made the over lines of this conversation. Um, because that county's gone through litigation on that, that's for y'all to decide. In whatever the attorney documents about. Policy wise, what you wanna do about that, but I did sign a written affidavit for. Um, those lawsuits saying, saying that it was about.
Chair, can I call a point of order? Yeah, thank you. Can we get, can we get back to the, back to the conversation? I think you posed a question to lenders about the project. I know we wanna get. We're we're getting kind of bogged down on some of the intent. If we can get to the meat of it, so that the workshop can kind of get back on track. Yeah. Yeah.
So, so basically, you wanna reduce that from eighty to fifty? I mean, I'm not saying you, but that was, you threw that out as a number, so.
The eighty was still a base. There would be the twenty that are not deed restricted at all.
Yep.
So those twenty percent would be not deed deed restricted at all. Um, and then. Fifty percent. Um, and this would be, I don't, I mean, fifty percent of the total. Would have to be owner occupied. Um. Or we can change it to. Local ownership or something else. I don't like that.
Because once again, I still, this is the part I just don't get. They've been, they've been allocated, and most likely they've already been built. So right now, the only thing that we're doing is creating restrictions for people to get inside of this house.
A lot of them have been built.
I have a question though. If eighty percent is for affordable and twenty percent is not, why isn't somebody buying the twenty percent? Who's not buying the twenty percent? Twenty percent.
Twenty percent, you know, we sold out of.
So this brings, brings up the thing that like. I know, I'm sorry, Stephen. You asked me to keep it moving. I'm very sorry, nothing. We we do have to have a realistic. Expectation. Of what a monthly rental unit in a place like this will cost. If we open that many up to affordability, like. Uh, 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 open that many up to being. Procurable. Um. Initially, the title, the mortgage by an out-of-state developer, and then like what what's that rental ceiling gonna be like, and we do not have the the tools. Statutorily to really cap rental costs, and I like making rentals is good. Resident occupancy is good, but like. I I just. I don't. I don't know. It's just, yeah, Ben.
I would like to speak to your point. If you know, the the issue with having a portion um, or non-local buyer houses is that. It has the probable effect of driving the cost of of the other units too, of all the H D H O and the not in you. You know, just like our market, right? If you have people from Aspen can buy a house in very county, the prices are gonna go up. Same thing with the H D H O. They, but somebody from outside, a business, a V R V O, or anybody can buy any H D H O unit, it's gonna drive prices up. And to your point, that's also gonna drive rental prices up, and so I don't know what that corollary impact is gonna be of like, you know, of if. Uh, if a unit becomes six hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars, you know, if somebody wants to cover their mortgage, or at least a portion of their mortgage, you know, that's gonna be two, three thousand, four thousand a month. You know, I go back to the intent, which I believe is the secondary market of. It's only supposed to be for people to buy that, to work in Grand County to buy it, so that cap the price, so that kept both the rental price and. The sales price to people that actively worked in here. So if you allow outside buyers, the price will go up.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Uh, Bill's been.
No.
They think seventy seven units is gonna change the market.
Something has got to stop that, though. And that is the fact that they have to be a qualified household, because eventually. You're not gonna be able to rent a house. I don't care what you charge for two thousand a month if the workforce can't afford it.
We're having that same discussion right now about buying houses. We were having the same discussion, so I think what you're saying is. Inevitably, what will happen, like prices will go up, people will not be able to afford it. That's why we're having this discussion right now, is because. They can't sell them and and. You know. They can't, yes, I'm sorry.
Right, but but if an outside investor owns that property, he's not gonna come in here and charge more rent than what the market will handle. And the market is that qualified household. That is the market he has. He doesn't have a market of anybody. He doesn't have a market of outside.
We're saying that's the exact thing that was for them, for buying. Yeah, that's, you're saying the same thing Zachariah said. Six, seven years ago about purchase and ownership. You're right, I agree with you. They shouldn't be able to like charge as much as what the market bear. And that's exactly what we believe the intention of the program was for the ownership. This was, they should only be building the things that the local market to bear.
You had your hand up, man.
Here, I think. I could, I would be some. Like a Laura's, like it's really good statistics on affordable housing. If we're defining affordable as thirty percent of a person's income.
Right.
And then. I guarantee in Grand County that landlords are charging much more than that.
One hundred percent.
And people are living. Four people to a two-bedroom house.
Yeah.
Very common. So the idea that landlords will be capped by a market force is just not true, because people wanna live here where they're from here.
Melody had her head up.
They won't be able to afford to. Pay rent without going beyond what is affordable or squishing a lot of people and.
What'd you have to say, Mel?
The, well, the more units that are in. The community for rent is gonna drop the rental price. And if you are a person, a developer, that buys one of these, and you know that you have to give it, that has to be rented out to that specific group of people. And you wanna charge four or five thousand dollars, and you're gonna be stuck paying the mortgage instead of the developers that at the moment are stuck paying that it's. Paying the mortgage, cause they can't put anybody in there to pay rent or buy them.
Sir, in the back, and then Trish. Guys, I'm gonna try and keep it really orderly, because Steve, I can feel Stephen looking through the internet, and his hand is up. Um, it was you, sir, and then Trish.
I was just gonna say, the basic. Economics, it's supply and demand, right? You limit the supply, and it goes up. Prices go up, and we're we're living in a real situation in our valley. Where the demand or the supply is extremely limited. Because it's a complex place to develop projects. A developer who has millions of dollars of capital is gonna say, do I do workforce housing? Or do I do a hotel? I'm gonna do a hotel every single time, because it's gonna make me more. For me personally, I did Murphy Platts because I wanted to provide housing for people. Was it the most profitable investment? No, I knew that going into it. Um, market forces will always drive rent up. I can guarantee you these half, these rents will be. Astronomically higher in ten years than what any of us anticipated, because. Um, one inflationary pressure, two, like, the restriction, the restriction on the supplies is a real thing. It is hard. To develop projects here, and so.
In ten years.
We, we, in in Moab, we think about like access, access to these housing units, and. It's a. It's a small market, so if you need people to really make an impact, you need to bring in outside capital. Well. But frankly, like the people that are coming to look at Moab, most of them are saying, I don't wanna do housing here. Because I can do it a lot easier in Provo or Salt Lake. Denver is is cheaper. I know the people, I know how to do it. I know the code doesn't change. And and I don't have to drive four or five hours to get to the project. So like. These are real considerations we need to think about as we look at the the cost of housing, and I think. To that point, like, supply is a real point of driving prices up.
Trish and then Stevens. And then.
I I, I don't know if I have anything to say. I mean, I I think. He somewhat spoke to it in the sense that. I think what I'm getting on the flip side is if supply is low, yeah, prices are gonna be super high, so. We have to, with a scalpel, be able to parse out affordable housing, just opening the housing market. It's, the prices are gonna be driven up. Is, would you agree with that? Okay, well, I I disagree with you. I've done a lot, and also I've done a lot of research just on gateway communities that, you take Jackson, Wyoming. And it's the same thing. A valley surrounded by public lands. Uh, average home there now is three point five million. And. That is what we're working against. We can't just crack it open and go, oh, it's, it it'll all be good. It's will eventually be have, you know, enough rentals for everybody. That's never gonna happen, because it's a gateway community. To a place that we're always gonna be have outside investors flooding here to buy something.
Stephen.
And so we have to be able to. And so we have to be able to mitigate that by providing something where we can.
I do wanna, thank you, Trish. I'm just trying to keep it moving along. And, and Stephen's been waiting and Aaron's waiting, but like while we're formulating our ideas. Let us remember that very last sentence where it does say that the occupancy will remain restricted to qualified households. So that narrows the scope very much for me onto what effects do we think this will have on rentable properties? Right? Because the mortgage is gonna be the mortgage. Twenty percent of the buyers are already excluded from the thing. And it's limited to qualified households. So if we're gonna allow some of these to be rented. The real question in my mind is how high does the rent get? Not like how high does the home sale get, right? We've already limited that question with that sentence. Stephen, help me.
And I think, I think this kind of pivots, regardless of how everybody, you know, how we got to where we are. Developers at one point penciled the projects and thought that based on the percentages as it was at the time, that it would, would, it would pencil out. Now we're coming back to the table and looking at restricting or reducing that amount of restriction on them. And in my mind, I kind of look and say, that sounds like a subsidy. Now you can, you can dislike that idea. But if you're changing it, it's a subsidy on the value that they originally had. So if you open it up and say we take back thirty percent. If we go from eighty to fifty, then what does the county get for that thirty percent? Now, some commissioners may say, you know, look, we just want them to sell. We really don't care the outcome. But are we giving that thirty percent in the hopes that we're looking at the remaining fifty percent and softening the stance? Because that's really what you're doing. You're opening up some of them to make additional funds off of. And you're giving that amount of money to developers. Now developers may say, hey, look, it didn't pencil out. But with this, with this action, you are giving developers and whether, you know, they may be, um they may disagree. A better starting point than they originally started with in this program. Now, if that's the case and we wanna do that, that's fine. But what I look at is say, what are we exchanging? What are we getting in, in return? Are we lowering the amount of rent? Are we lowering the price? And, and that's where the conversation maybe could be is where we look at that jump because we are creating additional wealth or additional benefit. Uh when we open those up because obviously the ones that weren't restricted have sold. And so I just put that out for, for a point for folks to think about.
Steve, the only way that your point works is if we had increased more than twenty percent. To be able to be sold or rented to anybody. We're talking about only restricted households here. We're not talking about the twenty percent that a developer can do anything he wants with. We're talking about the other eighty percent. And so we're not opening it up to thirty percent or forty percent that he can sell or rent to anybody. We're still keeping it within the qualified household. We're just trying to open it up to where somebody can own that piece of property and rent it to somebody else still who has to be qualified.
Sure, but, yeah, go ahead. I'm gonna try and, you know, in the interest of figuring out what's next, maybe. Um, we can, maybe this has been flown already. It probably has. I'm not the smartest person in the room. But we're at an impasse here between. And, and Stephen's point is very well taken. It is a new benefit to developer that would be vested by this. And so what does the county get by making a concession? It, had we thought about taking that first number we came up with? Twenty percent of them can be sold on the open market and making that smaller, making that ten or five percent. We already, we already tried that and it didn't go.
Thirty.
Gotcha. I just sort of like, you know, give a little, take a little, I, I tried. All right.
The county's getting out of it is they're getting, um. Our constituents are getting a place to live. That's what the county's gonna get out of it.
Money into our county to help with our housing problem. Right? We're inviting people to basically come and help us with our housing problem. And that's, and that's what we're getting out of it.
I was inviting the people that haven't built yet to go ahead and build because they know they'll be able to sell them. So then there'll be more houses available. And that's what the county's getting out of it. We're not necessarily getting, we're not getting any more money out of it, but we're making it so that. We can finish out the HGHO program and then.
And, and I guess we're stuck on this number three.
You guys hate it. I mean, this was, this was not discussed in the, um, this was just something, like it was discussed a long time ago. Just thought that, that, I mean, if we don't want this and if we want to go just rentals, then that's this conversation we need to have.
I think in the interest of keeping things, sorry, Aaron, you've been waiting a long time.
I just, you know, I, I, what I see is, is like, you know, is there a room? You guys are in the majority here. Can you tip a hat to a minority and have a smaller compromise? The only thing I would say is looking from like, somebody that would be like, oh, I wanna buy a house. Is, okay, let's, let's say we open this up and, and prices, they don't, they're not open to the open market. Like say they go up. Fifteen percent, not a lot, but can we, uh, what, what I still see is like, hey. I'm a working guy at Moab. I would like to buy a place and could that still be a protected little niche of the market? Where I can get it a foothold into a piece of property, like. I still think we need to think about a little small percentage of that, like, and I, I totally agree with you. I'm more of the opinion that like. You know, have uh outside capital come in. I, I'd rather have more housing than a purity test. Being built, but I still see like, I'm like, I think maybe about like the owner, the, the little guy trying to get his foot into his first house. If there was some reserved corner of these, this may be like an opportunity to.
And then just one, one suggestion real quick. When we talked about this, we were gonna have a smorgasbord or choose your own adventure here. So maybe if we kind of had, had those options right there available right there, that might be helpful too. So, you know.
You mean as far as the numbers is what you're thinking?
Yeah, from zero to, from zero to a hundred, whatever you wanna put it at right there, but to have it, have it written both ways, right? So that we can choose adventure on that. Do we want it to be completely open or do we want it to be five and ten percent? Or do we wanna just stick a number inside that? I think that that would be helpful.
Laura, you've been waiting too. Thank you.
Oh, well, just to Aaron's point, uh, just looking at the current plotted build out of what the HGHO developments are. There's already going to be about hundred and thirty-two units that are just for rental. So these developers have already decided that they were gonna purely. Uh rental properties. So I just wanna keep that in mind if we are providing, uh, there will be a plethora of rental opportunities. That's what I wanted to say. It'll be about hundred and fifty to sixty.
So is that vested or, or like on the ground already?
Um, they're vested. They're not, well, yeah, uh, but I just wanna point out that there are many opportunities for rentals already.
And so does that mean that developers keeping them and they're renting them out? So the developers owning them, their apartments.
So like the one right now, it's been a valid build, the one that Trish was talking about is forty-two units, thirty-five of them. Feeled restricted rentals. Um same with the Bugay property, it's a hundred and twenty units, I think, and it's a hundred of them are.
And keep in mind, they're outside developers. They're not local developers. So their, their rental income is going to go out of, out of the community. So that's something to think about that. So you're already doing that. You're already allowing that.
But if there was wanting an opportunity like the Eric Schley or the opportunity for.
I like the idea of, of being able to preserve the ability for people to be able to purchase these and then not be like obligated by other people and. Then not have any opportunity to global. So I think that if there is a percentage. Um that's open up outside purchasers. I just don't know how you formulate that in deed restriction.
Yeah, and how do you, how do you, how do we say, you know, five percent? Does that mean, because what I don't want to do is I don't want it to restrict the smaller people either. So like, let's say that there's, you know, someone who's got two, two on their property. How does that, how does that, how does that work in this program right here? Right? It's fifty percent of the total number. How do we know which fifty percent? Who gets to be in on that little, on that buy right there? You know, we can only rent these or we can only sell these.
First comes first served.
Gonna try my best. See, Stephen ran away, guys. We scared him off. Let's, let's, this is just a workshop. I sometimes have to remind myself that not everything is hearing. So, um. We, uh, let's chew on that. My question for everyone would be.
Quickly, so I'm sorry, just so I have marching orders on this. Do you want me to rewrite this?
Yeah, um, we don't like it as is written. I'm gonna make a good face suggestion to everyone in the room. Talk to twenty people that you know who don't own their house. Ask them if they would rather rent or own. Let that number inform how high that, how many of these should be rentable. Pick your number based on how many people would rather be a renter or a homeowner. I know a lot of people who are like, I'm not getting into that business right now. I like my rental just fine, but find out like, we all know a different community. So go ask twenty people what you, what they think. Straw pulling. Um and then maybe we can get back to Chris with a little bit of a more well-defined. Idea of how we want this to read. Cool? There you go.
Moving well.
Um, oh, that's a big one. So, um, looks like we're taking out. Ownership by Grand County. Grand County's not gonna be the owner.
I think that that one's decided at the.
Yep. Um, anything we need to know about foreclosure? That's scary.
So this last section needed to be removed, my understanding, so that they could, um.
FHA requested that.
Yeah. Um, and another reason to add that remedy in cure section since we're removing this, um, and then. I mean, to me, it seems abandoned anyway. I didn't have a problem with it removing it.
Applications now.
Yeah, the, the main one we have next is the owner occupant shall be exempt from yearly requalification requirements. Um, you know, so if you're gonna be an owner occupant, it's a one and done sort of.
Or yeah.
You hate that.
Yeah. Sign up. Captain David wants to hear it.
Oh.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, if somebody buys a unit, then we say, we're, we're never gonna try them ever again.
And then they rented out. But if they're, that's why it's an owner, it's only for owner occupant.
Aren't we sure it's owner occupant if it's only has to buy towards the box? But we have no way of knowing that's actually owner occupant.
This was, this was handed to me at the, at, this is, this was something that was given to me at the, um.
Yeah, and I think that the idea of this is that they don't have to continually qualify. Right? So they don't have to fall under the same restriction.
This is the point is that they're getting that exemption because they're occupied. But they don't have to testify affidavits, any kind of proof that they're actually the occupant. It kind of just goes a little bit.
I think.
Let, let's see, well.
Then they can move to whoever they want to.
What if, so they have to be actively employed and they rented to.
Cause if they rent it, they would have, they would fall under the rental. They would have to be.
But how would you know if they don't have to go back and then affidavit every year?
It would basically just be taken off the HGHO books.
I think what we're missing is, is the idea of this is, is like, let's say that someone qualified and they, they qualify that. They're working here, right? And they got another job at, let's say, Google and they're now at Google. They shouldn't have to re-qualify as living here. You can't take their house away.
No, they just don't qualify. They're still living there.
Or if they're not living there, then they're renting to somebody that is.
So you're just talking about a year.
Even done that, at least for probably the, you know, owners, if they're, uh, living there.
Currently, they have to re-qualify each year.
Yeah.
But if you bought, if you bought the house.
They would have to re-qualify.
Yeah, we talked about re-qualifying from primary residents.
Yeah, that makes sense. Like, if they sign an affidavit once a year. That they're actually the occupant. That's no problem.
They don't have to say where they work, it's that they bought it, right? If they bought it and they're the owner of it, they could stop working because they bit that.
Or clarify that and.
With them. Yeah, I think that this language will. Yeah, and I also think, I mean, we can, we can add just like, or upon request by the county or hostel or however, I mean, we can add some simple language. Um to, to clarify an affidavit every year. This is just for requalification, which is more involved. I think that was our main concern is that when somebody moves out of the line, that they don't wanna lose their housing because they don't wanna change jobs or. There's something to get a better opportunity. We don't want them to have to sell their home or.
As you know.
Primary residency. Um, I would encourage you to still do requalification as well. That's also our opportunity to like, just generally check in. And make face and make sure that they're in compliance with CCNRs, like all the other.
Yeah, I mean, that's our same worries. If you take away like we qualify that we never see you again, that's just a, that's just gonna cause for like. It's off the charts and we're never, you know, who knows what's happening with that unit five years from now. I mean, a lot of time passes, things happen. We don't know what's going on and then all of a sudden we got all these. Owner occupied units that we just don't even know what's going on with.
So what would you require for them to, to, just that they sign an affidavit every year that they are.
Talked about replacing the authorized affidavit. Um, I haven't heard back more. I'm curious about talking back when we worked on uh attorney agreements.
Yeah.
So it would just basically be, uh, swearing an oath.
Yeah.
Under threat of perjury that in primary occupancy condition.
Switching out. Is that, would that, would that give you the teeth that you would need to go after somebody if they sign a sworn oath?
Yeah, yeah, that's been changed, but yeah, that's been changed, but of course, that's been changed, or you know, that, that language is. Is, we brought that language. We can use that with them in our, um, agreements. So we don't need. It'd be documentary. Like it, it can be very simple. And it was just a requalification, not that they had.
I was one of the kids in the back of the room too, don't worry. Um, the next section, uh, section F, also I think kind of helps. Well, some concern about what qualified and requalified means wherein. Once an owner is approved, it will not constitute a violation. So there is some time getting put in there to figure it out if there's any confusion on the county side. Um, as long as the occupant owner at the time is still the owner. Um, that's a, uh, what, yeah, here we are. Thoughts on that?
I, I think that clears it up.
Yeah.
Yeah. They still need to check in annually, but they're set.
Um, the next page, the backside of sheet, I think this is eight. Sale of units. Um, it looks to me like the main stuff we want to deal with here. Is listing and pre-qualification. Chris, do you have much on that? Just looks like we think.
Yeah, this is just so that, you know, let's, you know, if, uh, if someone is having an issue with purchasing because they're. Getting up there in years, um, to know that they could leave this to a family member or someone else. And not have it, you know, and not have them be penalized because they're in a will.
They wouldn't have to qualify.
Yeah. They'd just be able to transfer it. If they sold it, they would have to sell it to a qualified. Um, household, but that's just to clear, to, to make it, you know. This wouldn't happen a lot, but it's also something that, you know, they're dealing with the death. We don't need to like force them to sell their property in twenty days. While they're finding a funeral or something.
So Phil, that's how the grandma can give it to you.
If I die. So I, I like this language because they shouldn't have to qualify.
Yeah, and this came from, uh, my colleague.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we were, yeah. And I think that's the last one we have to.
You know mine?
Yeah, Rachel.
Um, so one thing was, um, with the rentals, like we had talked about with CNHA where they can't meet the nine months out of the year. Um, and so this, nothing here is helping them with that situation where we, that's why we come up with those different.
Um, and so this, nothing here is helping them with that situation where we, that's why we come up with those different buckets of like. A local business needing six months.
Months out of thirty-six.
Yeah, I think that we guys, that wasn't.
Some of our stuff for rental three months in here. Into somewhere else. And I swear I added it.
Right. Well, I mean, how do you feel about that, John? I mean, your units haven't rented yet, so you could be in violation if we go and let.
It's just talking generally, kind of between section two and the rent question, and then the. Kind of a disconnect in the rental and the length of a lease term. Yeah, yeah, right. So it's not really one spot, but.
One of the points that I I would make again is we don't want these things sitting there. Yeah, like, I mean, there's houses that are available. Let's, let's, let's make some market forces, forces people to rent them, sell them, do whatever the things and. Right? We don't want to leave these things to where we're like, well, I'll just sit on this for, you know, five, three or four years until, until the right buyer comes along. Like, let's make it so that we're actually putting people inside these houses.
Another thing I wanted to bring up with the case up or letter from an employer of a local. A business located within the local area for its residency. We had talked about, uh, businesses that are doing business in.
Right.
In the area, but they're not necessarily located in the area, like a construction company. So I don't know, there there could be another dot that's put into that, that just stays like a letter from an employer that's doing a project or something.
In the local area.
Well, I think it, you know. Presence within the boundaries of the. Operating and serving the local area, I thought.
Yeah, he said it's it's in there.
Yeah.
Operating or serving in the local.
Which is operating in and serving the local area and much local businesses.
Yeah, that does, but it's like when you go to residency and it says the way that the following pieces of documentation, they can prove that, there's nothing there that gives. That.
Herbage just has to be brought over.
I think so, yeah.
Not even have the, the goal points were specific for the land use code, have that in rules. Cause I mean, yeah, there there's even more which. Residency and employment like beyond a rental agreement.
There are other ways, so do you feel that 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 whole caution needs to be removed so that it's just put into like the goals and regulations?
I I feel like just taking the, you know, one of the following piece of the documentation, like outlining more specifics about administration. Like this feels one way from administrative.
Oh, I I get where you're on.
Like, yeah. Like, yes, and with this round.
Right.
Land use code four point three into rules and regulations or.
Well, folks, um, I'm gonna remind us that a lot of the stuff. Particularly cross clause agreement. Is best left to Stephen. That's why he makes the big bucks. Um, they're. They specialize in making sure that we said the same thing over and over and over again. That's what lawyers do. So, um. Unless there's anything that's truly substantial, and I hate using the corporate buzz talk, but truly tactical about the facts and figures of what we say. In this document, I'm gonna suggest that, um, it might be wrapped up for the time being. Um, I really appreciate all of your guys' time getting me caught up to speed. Brian, did you have any last?
Just one more thing, and there was something I, and I can't remember where we went up with this on this, but it was, uh, wasn't there? Are there restrictions that only allow businesses to purchase so many units? Like, didn't we? Is there something in there? So.
Maybe you guys remember, can I only own like ten percent of a total development?
Condominiums and HOA are gonna be the only one that have like ownership restrictions.
Gotcha.
Has something else, but as far as like lending, like. The condominium is gonna be really strict, but like, a townhome community, it's.
It was just making sure, cause I remember we were talking, I think the example was like, if the hospital wanted to get twenty, twenty units, right? We want to make sure that the hospital was able to get twenty. Just his or larger.
They can't in a townhouse complex, it's just not condominium.
There's no restrictions in this right here. Okay.
Yeah.
Super, thanks for that. Um. Hadn't even crossed my mind. Everybody, thank you really for all of the time that you spent working on this task force. I'm. Sure that it sparked my brain, we have a lot to go with, but, um, this has been long overdue. Um, for us to kind of get on the same page. And I'll, uh, app- appreciate your time and effort and all the thought that folks can. HOSU and the private sector, uh, have really put into this. Um, and everybody else, Stan, Mattel, and the Housing Authority and. However, many dozen agencies are here right now. When is, um, from my knowledge, when is the next housing subcommittee meeting? Task force.
It's the next meeting scheduled is your planning commission to open a public hearing.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, then when can we see some updated?
Uh, when she wakes up in the middle of the night.
I guess my point is, is that hopefully before the public hearing opens, so we've got time to review, and that's all I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a hard deadline, just not. Minutes before the meeting.
I would, um, because it's a public hearing, we're going to be. Expected under statute to have any like material documentation listed in the packet. For the, what is that window? Thank you. Ten days for a public hearing. I always get it screwed up. Mine's twenty and I always. So we'll definitely, everyone will have a chance to look at this ten days. Is that four days from now?
No.
No? Because it it's at the next planning commission meeting. So it's not the next.
It will be the public hearing is the next planning commission, yes.
I guess you're not doing anything.
If they can get to. Working as hard as you can. We have a skeletal crew in planning and zoning. We need to be respectful that they.
We're being very respectful. We're also making sure that this moves forward in a timely manner.
But.
I. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Ask for a second here. This isn't the conversation for the housing task force. This is more of like a PC county commission staff question. I I'm gonna speak up real quick for Chrissy and Mikail, who are swamped and have two thousand and eighty hours of support. Chrissy has a little bit more here. Um. And just, you know, um, this can, we can follow up offline, chew on it. But giving Chrissy. As it stands right now, we would wanna see these final draft edits that we talked about. Ready for a review in a public hearing four days from now. And we don't even have a real resolution onto the big spicy stuff that we talked about. And so. We need to give Chrissy something to write if we're gonna ask her to have something written down four days from now, and we don't really have the numbers figured out. Can we consider? Putting it. Not at the next planning commission meeting. But what is that? The end of May planning commission meeting? Just so that we have some time to actually give Chrissy some guidance. I'm asking for two weeks.
I think that'd be graceful. Yes. Yes, I do have a question. So what? When you have a public hearing, so the planning commission would have a pub- public hearing. Wouldn't they take the public's information into thought and then add it into it before they brought it before the commission? Just seems like that's what he would do, right?
Yeah.
So you'd have the public hearing, and then you'd have another media, PMZ meeting to make any change? Nope.
Did they vote on, um, public hearings the same night? That they are presented.
So they can make changes.
So they can make that.
So they could listen to public hearings, make the changes, and then the next meeting, come to the commission. Okay, just.
We could, we could do that, and I, I, um.
But I'm, I'm okay with you. I mean, I feel like I understand the four days from now.
My, my main thing, um, in in asking that is giving. The. Staff some time to produce the next better product of this. That we will be able to have a hearing about. Right? Otherwise, we could have just had the public hearing tonight. If we don't have any time to make any changes to this, we would have ended up with the same practical results. Input about the document as it was presented to us. We have two weeks to make the edits that we've discussed. I've got all these little squiggles and strike throughs and script.
So just one, one second, really quick. So we're talking, on on the document that I have, I have May twelve for the public hearing.
We're, what we're asking is it would be delayed until the.
Could we do it twenty, on the twenty-sixth instead? I also like, there are some concrete like. I, this is a priority for the county, it's a priority for me too. Um, I also have other stuff in the docket. Um, planning commission business that other planning commissioners have asked us to deal with that have been pretty consistently bumped back. Like Megan had to leave, but she's been trying to put together a cross-county planning and zoning workshop. And I mean, I've been telling her, oh, next time, oh, next time, for like, you know, a month and a half at this point. So. Um, just trying to like, you know. Give, give everybody a seat to kind of have their project is is all really asking for, is a scheduling thing is all.
Um, I'll say I'm reluctant, but I will, um, look for that date, but I feel like this has been pushed and pushed and. Pushed and I'll be honest with you, I'm done. I'm ready to just do it through the commission if we have to. So, yes, if we wanna wait two weeks, if we wanna take that extra extension, but then. We need these documents ahead of time so that we can review them also. And move this forward because this, this has to move forward. I'm.
Yeah.
This is priority number one.
I agree with you. It is the highest priority we've got on our docket right now. Um. I guess what we do, I'm still kind of getting used to procedural stuff. Um, I I will. Ask for a straw poll from the planning commission. Um, what? Taking your advice into consideration during future considerations and, um. See what, uh, what the planning commission like. This isn't the venue at this moment to have the conversation, like, are you feeling guilted? Have, have we lost a forum by the? Well, um.
Yeah.
I guess as we're closing up the workshop. Um. This is a curious one. I don't really have a quorum, so I can't contemplate future consideration.
There you go. Understood.
He's the chair of planning commission, he gets to set their agenda, and I think if he wants to set for the twenty-sixth. Um, I think we have respect that.
I think I made that.
Oh, twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Ronnie. Can we get like a, a meeting of. Instead of like, can we do a special session?
I, I know, but, but yeah, we, we are down so many staff and.
I think we just agreed to the two weeks for the second one, right?
Right, but but Ronnie just pointed out, that's Memorial Day, so.
Well, we moved.
Yeah.
It's on us, okay, okay. No, wait, I'm looking at the wrong one. Okay, yeah, but, um. I'll tell you, Bill, by way of like compromise chair to chair, how about we? Definitively have a final copy of this. We won't push it back anymore. If it's on. The. If we consider these comments on the twenty-seventh, that'll be the only thing we talk about on the twenty-seventh. We'll commit to run it as late as we need to to really get a recommended draft to the county commission for your following meeting on the third.
Cool. Well, I couldn't get it into the packet. By the twenty-seventh, because that's when it's.
When, when will you open the public hearing?
Public hearing would be opened on the twenty-seventh. Ten days. The public hearing will be opened on the sixteenth.
And then the twenty-seventh would be the meeting.
Yes, okay.
And then your guys' public hearing would open.
Yeah.
And we noticed there's only ahead of, ten days ahead of time without a vote.
Well, that's what I was just saying, we can commit to vote on a recommended draft on the meeting on the twenty-seventh, the day of.
They still have to be noticed ten days before your moment.
Yeah, and that would put it on the third. There.
I think it would on the seventeenth, in seventeen, meeting for us, yeah.
Yeah, fourteen after three is.
Yeah, just go to our next meeting.
There's, there's a timeline, and I appreciate, um, the understanding that. Um. Particularly with the planning department staff. Um. Land use code revisions, this kind of stuff, and I'm just gonna point it out there if I can, you know, respectfully comment to the county commissioners who are here. Um, this is. One subsection of like a nine hundred page document that we're all gonna try and get through. Within a one-year timeline that we've been given without a consultant, without a dedicated planning direct director. And so that's all this work. That's one section of one chapter in a nine-chapter document. We haven't even gotten into the engineering stuff. We're gonna have a, start talking about setbacks and fence height. So just keep that in mind as we kind of schedule these things out.
That's some empathy. I understand.
Super. Well, thank you very much, guys. Um, planning and zoning, folks. We should just look at each other a little bit and figure out what we do now that we don't have a quorum. Um. Yeah, I I was about to. No, the planning and zoning status. The workshop. I know. Thank you. Take care, guys. Um, so PMZ gang, um, we lost a quorum, so we're no longer able to take any substantive vote. Um, we also didn't, uh, some of our planning commission members didn't have the meeting minutes in their packet already. And so that was the only thing that we actually had to vote on, and we were going to bump it back to next week anyway, because we didn't have a complete packet, so. Losing a quorum really lost us no business. Um, we can give, uh, county commission.
I have a quick update.
Thank you.
Give me one second. Very quick.
Thanks, Phil.
And maybe you can help me with understanding, and I know I should understand this, but the whole ex parte communications.
So I'm gonna, just a couple ground rules right now. We don't have a.
Okay, yeah, so that's right.
So. Do you wanna just adjourn right away? Is that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on your advice for this one.
I I think, I think it's appropriate that we adjourn because we don't have a forum, so we can't do anything, even.
Trish, would you just roll in this week's updates into next week?
I have my. Um, alternatively, you could turn your updates into an email, which you send.
Yeah.
And the group, and the group should not reply all.
Okay.
Well, in that case, guys, um, since we can't vote on adjourning, I will adjourn the meeting. Is that how I do it? Is that the way government works now? I'm just gonna do it?
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Is that metal detector a permanent fixture now? Gonna need to get that, you're gonna need to get that plate in my head removed.